Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Alodion Moore's Pradium, Antay, Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC, I'm the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 116, Class 116. What did we learn in Class 115? Well, we learned that unfortunately, good brother Tajri Bay is full of mishmash, right? So when I say Tajri Bay is full of mishmash, what does that mean? That means he just can't answer a straight question. He just always gotta give us a word salad in. Unfortunately, good brother Tajri Bay is already admitting after 50 years, he didn't tell us half of what we needed to know. And what's the other half is that we need a nation-state. And that's the truth. In order to decolonize, we have to understand the steps of decolonization. And what's the first step in decolonization? That's called Declaration of Independence. After that, you draft your own constitution with its three branches of government, right? That now proclaims the land as, it proclaims what the nationality is, right? And it starts to get into government and relations with other states. So it's state-on-state relations, right? And this is what Tajri Bay is saying. He did not help us to establish, or to restore, or to reclaim our states in the Empire of Morocco, and that's the truth, right? So another reason why I say that Tajri Bay is full of mishmash is because he understands that we needed three branches of government, right? So lately, in his last couple of videos, one moment he's saying, "We need a nation-state." And then in his most latest video with Dr. G, he said, "Enforce the Constitution." Well, wait a minute Taj, do we need a nation-state of our own? Or do we enforce the colonist's constitution? Can you please let us know which one? And this is the reason why the judge has said he's full of mishmash. He keeps intermixing these two different jurisdictions. He don't know how to choose between the entire submission to the law of the empire versus still being naturalized in the jurisdiction of the United States. So he still keeps intermixing these two jurisdictions, right? So we don't need to ask Taj anymore, which one is he talking about? We don't need to ask him, "Should we enforce the Constitution? Or should we be enforcing our own Moroccan constitution?" Why do I say we don't have to ask that question to Taj no more? Well, here's the answer on the board, right? We've already answered the question. ANPAC already ratified, deposited, and promulgated a constitution as of February 28th, 2021, two and a half years ago, right? We've already taken steps to start decolonizing in the Empire of Morocco within our territory of what used to be called Colorado, right? Now it's Alodion Moore's Pradium, Antay, Colorado, right? That's the first step in trying to build what's called nation-states. Because now the Moors have to go study what's called Uti Posidatus Juris. That means the Moors cannot just claim the east coast and the west coast as just being one large state. The Moors have to now decolonize each of the 50 territories that the United States has claimed under constitutions. There's the state of Alabama, right? You got Mississippi, right? You got Louisiana, Nevada, right? New Mexico, all of these are territories. So the Moors have to enact a constitution and reclaim the latitude, longitude of that territory. So therefore, we have to decolonize 50-plus territories with our own constitutions. So with that being said, that's exactly what ANPAC did under definition of Uti Posidatus Juris. We took over what was called the demarcation lines, right? Delineation lines, the borders that was in place that the colonists set forth. According to international law, anyone who's decolonizing has to take over the borders that the colonists already set forth. They're called demarcation lines. Okay, so ANPAC took over the territory commonly known as Colorado. So we're the successor state, right? And now we're seeking what's called external self-determination. External self-determination, not internal self-determination. Who has internal self-determination? Well, that's Indian reservations. Indian reservations come under the jurisdiction of the United States. They have internal self-determination to govern and have autonomy amongst Indians. But the Indian reservations come underneath the jurisdiction of the United States. However, Moors get to seek external self-determination. That means our governments govern over the Americans and their states, right? So we are the starburst because United States of America is located where? They're located geographically in Morocco. They were seeking asylum in our land in 1776 until present day. They've always been foreigners in the land of Morocco, and that's the truth, alright? So as you know, we opened up the Constitution. This is what Tajri Bay should have did for the Moors decades ago, right? Because you have to remember, Nobudra Lee already brought us back the knowledge himself. Nobu said, "We're descendants of Moroccans, born in America." Well, what does "born" mean? It means "naturalized through due process." How do we become naturalized? Well, it's called the birth certificate. As soon as your mother signed the birth certificate, she pledged allegiance for you to the jurisdiction of the United States of America. There's no such thing as someone being born on the soil. No one's born on the soil. People are born in hospitals, right? Or they're born at home. But eventually, you gotta get that document called a birth certificate. The birth certificate, it acts as an adhesion contract that says now you're pledging that this child was born in a jurisdiction of America. That's the application, right? What else made Moors Americans? Where's 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendment, as well as the Naturalization Act of 1870? Then the Sultan came around in 1880. He confirmed the naturalization status of all Moors in the Madrid Convention of 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1 and 2, right? So the only way for the Moors to be able to return back to Morocco, we have to also pick up a pen and pledge our allegiance back to the state. There's no such thing as saying just having a verbal decree. No, there must be an application. Because your mother signed an application called a birth certificate to make you a citizen. And once you turn 18 and became an adult, now you have obligation to now sign an application to repatriate back to the jurisdiction of Morocco. Keep it in mind, Morocco's an empire, it's vast. Some people are stuck on stupid, thinking the Empire of Morocco is the Kingdom of Morocco. That means you just need to go back and study it. The King of Morocco didn't come into existence until after 1956. More officially, 1962, when they deposited their constitution with the United Nations, right? So the empire prior to 1956. So when Nobudra Lee was waving a Moroccan flag, that flag at the time represented the empire until 1956. Then the Moroccan flag now became a Kingdom of Morocco flag. It became a provincial state flag instead of an empire flag. The Kingdom of Morocco laid claim to it, alright? So for everybody out there that keeps talking about, "There's no more empire," that's not true. You know who recognized the empire? The treaties recognized the empire. You know who else recognized the empire? The United States of America recognized the empire because the United States of America has never terminated the treaties they had with the empire. Guess who else recognized the empire? Moroccans represent the empire. We recognize the empire through what? Our constitutions. Our constitutions recognize the empire, right? So for those people out there that keep saying, "The empire don't exist," well, that's what you call your interpretation and your belief. Because the reality is, the truth of the matter is, treaties recognize the empire, United States of America recognized the empire, and our Moroccan state constitutions recognize the empire. That's called law and not belief, right? Okay, so what else? So as I said in Class 115, we're gonna start reading over what's called responsibility of states for internationally wrongful acts, right? So when you now restore or reclaim your state, your Moroccan state, which is more of a modern Moroccan state in the West. It's a part of the empire. Now, if you have someone else now that's trying to breach your rights, your laws, right? What do you do? Well, the United Nations set forth a treaty that says, "Okay, here are provisions you can use as a state against a belligerent state." Okay, these are rules of engagement, right? To talk about the scope of how you deal with someone else's belligerence, okay? But we're not going to start reading that just yet, right? Why is that? Well, because as the Moors know, we're still going over the Charter of the United Nations of 1945. And we've already read Chapter 7. But what I'd like to do before we start reading over the United Nations document about the responsibility of states for internationally wrongful acts, what I'd like to do is read over the next chapter, okay? The next chapter of the Charter starts to get into what's commonly known as regional arrangements. Okay, this is Chapter 8, okay? Chapter 8. Alright, so before we read Chapter 8, let's take it to the board, okay? So right now, we're talking about the Charter of the United Nations, Chapter 7 and 8, okay? We're now entering to 8, but 7 and 8 play off of each other, okay? 7 and 8 play off of each other, okay? So like Siamese twins, alright? You have to understand that, okay? Okay, so here we go. So Chapter 7 is about what? "Action with respect to threats to the peace, breaches of the peace, and acts of aggression." This is what all the states on planet Earth, they invoke Chapter 7 when they having problems with another state. But also, what else do states do? They have what they call their international intergovernmental organizations that also help as mediators and arbitrators to settle disputes regionally, right? Such as the EU, right? The European Union. Or you got NATO, and Africa's got the African Union. Matter of fact, the American states have what's called the OAS, the Organization of American States, right? It's a lot of organizations who deal with being arbitrators and mediators between states, okay? So in the 21st century, international intergovernmental organizations do a lot of the legwork on behalf of states. So the organizations almost act as power of attorneys, right? So in Chapter 8, it's talking about regional arrangements, okay? And when we get into this, why are we reading over Chapter 8 now? Well, what's a regional arrangement? Well, such as the WRC Regional Council, the WRC, we've been talking about. Alright, so down here says, "The WRC Regional Council will lead our people through the legal due process of international law and decolonization." That's very powerful to understand what I just said. Let me read it again. "When it comes to a regional arrangements, which is Chapter 8 of the Charter of the United Nations, what the Moors have done, the recognized Moroccan states, we put together an international intergovernmental organization that operates like the central government of the Empire of Morocco. It's the Moors' central government, okay? And what it's about, say, "The WRC Regional Council will lead our people through the legal due process of international law and decolonization." Okay, that's what you do with regional arrangements. You bring in all your states together to sit at a round table, especially for the Moors. Why is that important? Because as you know, the Sultan stepped down in 1956, and he left the central government void of a government. There's no more Sultan. There's no more three branches government. There's no more monarchy. There's no government representing the empire up until what date? Well, up until 2023, right? So since 1956, now you fast forward to 2023, now we put together a central government again to represent the Empire of Morocco. Now this time, Moors are now governing the Empire of Morocco again, even though these were the wishes and the decrees of the Sultan in the first place in the year 1906. You go back and look at the Act of Odessa from 1906. The Sultan got concerned when he took loans from Great Britain, Spain, and France. The Sultan said, "Uh-oh, I just accepted a predatory loan. It's just a matter of time before I have to give up the empire." So what did the Sultan do in 1906? He said, "Wake up the Moors, let them back into government. The Moors will protect the empire because it's their dang old land in the first place," right? So the Sultan just wanted to be the monarch and then allow the Moors through the Magzin to control the three branches of government along with a monarchy, okay? That must be understood. So now as Moors, there's no more Arabs, no more Arabs governing over the empire. Now it's Moors governing over the empire again. We're getting back to the original jurisdiction of how this began in the first place, okay? So they always say the Moors failed. No, we didn't fall. What failed? What failed was our governments. We as a people, we still here, but our governments failed, right? So now we're restoring our governments. That's what's happening, okay? Through the WRC, which will act like the central government. So getting back to the regional arrangement of the Charter of the United Nations, 1945, okay? Chapter 8, okay? So we're gonna read, it only has three articles, Articles 52, 53, and 54. It's a very short chapter. Let's go ahead and read it. And then we're gonna learn a little bit more about the WRC Regional Council before we start reading over the United Nations Resolution regarding the responsibility of states for internationally wrongful acts of the year 2001. Alright, fair enough? Okay, from the top.
Chapter 8, Regional Arrangements, Article 52. 1. Nothing in the present Charter precludes the existence of regional arrangements or agencies for dealing with such matters relating to the maintenance of international peace and security as are appropriate for regional action, provided that such arrangements or agencies and their activities are consistent with the purpose and principles of the United Nations.
Okay, so Article 1, okay? Excuse me, Article 52, Section 1. Says, "Nothing in the present Charter precludes the existence of a regional arrangement or agencies from dealing with such matters relating to the maintenance of international peace and security as are appropriate for regional action, provided that such arrangements or agencies and their activities are consistent with the purposes and principles of the United Nations." Right, so what's the United Nations principles about? It's about human rights, right? It's about the right of self-determination. It's about the right for people to self-govern. And it's also about the rights of states, alright? So it's about the rights of states and the rights of people, okay? So it has a duality meaning in the Charter of the United Nations. Even though the Charter of the United Nations was established by states, but the reality is the states then had to extend certain human rights to their nationals, and they had to extend certain human rights of self-determination to all the inhabitants that they had colonized, okay? That must be understood. So therefore, when you go back and read Articles 1, Section 2, you read Article 55, and Article 73 is about self-determination and human rights. And Article 73 is absolutely about the rights of indigenous people, okay? That must be understood. Okay, let's read Section 1 one more time, and we'll move on.
1. Nothing in the present Charter precludes the existence of regional arrangements or agencies for dealing with such matters relating to the maintenance of international peace and security as are appropriate for regional action, provided that such arrangements or agencies and their activities are consistent with the purposes and principles of the United Nations. 2. The members of the United Nations entering into such arrangements or constituting such agencies shall make every effort to achieve specific settlement of local disputes through such regional arrangements or by such regional agencies before referring them to the Security Council.
Okay, it's called right there. So Section 2, okay? "The members of the United Nations entering into such arrangements or constituting such agencies shall make every effort to achieve specific settlement of local disputes through such regional arrangements or by such regional agencies before referring them to the Security Council." So what's happening is the Charter saying, "How about the states put together some type of regional referee to try to settle disputes before you bring it to the United Nations Security Council or General Assembly or the ICJ? Try to sell it from a perspective of mediation, arbitration, conciliation before you're seeking judicial settlement at the United Nations, okay?" So what did we do as Moors? Well, we understood the provisions of the Charter. So therefore, we put together what's called the WRC, which is the WRC Regional Council that operates as a mediator or arbitrator in the event that we have disputes with the United States. Keep it in mind, the United States itself is an international intergovernmental organization. The WRC is an international intergovernmental organization. So therefore, these two parties can talk to each other on the same level because both of them are organizations that represent who? States, right? So the United States represents charter states, where the WRC represents organic Moroccan states, okay? But yet, now we can start to interface and talk with the United States through our WRC. So they got the US, and we got the WRC to talk to each other, to interface, two organizations, okay? We're moving now in white man. Okay, remember I told the Moors it's about chess. Everything in chess is about white man, right? The board is set up evenly at the beginning of the game. Both sides have equal pieces, right? You start off equally, right? Now, what makes a distinction? Was whoever has the power of knowledge today to see further in the game is the person who doesn't make as many blunders. But the person who makes the least amount of mistakes and the person that can now calculate the furthest out with their tactical execution more than likely has an advantage. So what advantages do Moors have? Well, we have the advantage of our treaties. We have the advantage of home court advantage because we are Moroccans in Morocco, and the United States is foreigners in Morocco. So automatically, that gives us the white pieces. We're the home team. That's white pieces, right? We get to open up where our offense first. You see, we get to control the narrative through our Moroccan laws, our Moroccan regulations, and our Moroccan constable courts because of the power of our treaties, right? In addition to that, we get to flank them with international law. So international law, even though it's generic language, all states recognize international law as being substantive. It is statutes and laws in itself, okay? So we get to flank the United States with our Moroccan laws, our Moroccan treaties. We also get to flank them with international law. They can't get out of that. You see, that's checkmate all day, alright? Okay, listen up. Alright, Section 3.
Section 3. "The Security Council shall encourage the development of Pacific settlement of local disputes through social, through such regional arrangements or by such regional agencies, either on the initiative of the states concerned or by reference from the Security Council."
Okay, so Section 3. "The Security Council shall encourage the development of Pacific settlement of local disputes through such regional arrangements or by such regional agencies, either on the initiative of the states concerned or by reference from the Security Council." So how do you settle disputes domestically? How do you settle disputes from a regional perspective? What's domestic? Well, that's within your state. What's regional? That's on the east coast and the west coast. That's a region. You see, so the United Nations is saying right here, "Try to settle this dispute between states." Okay, well, what's the problem that the Moors had for decades? We were stateless. We could not fight the United States equally because we were stateless and lawless. We had no state and no laws, right? We couldn't play chess. We had checkers, they had chess pieces. We kept trying to figure out why is the United States was beating us? Because we didn't understand the rules of engagement. They had three branches government, and you know, we had a three-ring circus. That's what we had. That's the truth. Okay, Section 4.
This article in no way impairs the application of Articles 34 and 35.
Alright, continue.
Article 53, Section 1. "The Security Council shall, where appropriate, utilize such regional arrangements or agencies for enforcement action under its authority. But no enforcement action shall be taken under regional arrangements or by regional agencies without the authorization of the Security Council, with the exception of measures against any enemy state as defined in Paragraph 2 of this article, provided for pursuant to Article 107 or in regional arrangements directed against renewal of aggressive policy on the part of any such state until such time as the organization may, on request of the government's concern, be charged with the responsibility for preventing further aggression by such a state."
Okay, so Section, um, Section 4, yeah, well, yeah. No, Article 53. So Article 53, from the top. Article 53. "The Security Council shall, where appropriate, utilize such regional arrangements, right? For the Security Council to get involved if there's a major dispute that would threaten the peace of the planet Earth." Says, "Agencies for enforcement actions under its authority." So the Security Council has authority if in fact, two states about to go to war. Security Council come in and say, "Look, since y'all cannot settle it regionally, Security Council has an obligation to try to come in and try to sell it peacefully." Okay, so it says, "But, no enforcement action shall be taken under regional arrangements or by regional agencies without the authorization of the Security Council, with the exception of measures against any enemy state." See, that's the exception to the rule. What's the exception to the rule? Is when you have to defend yourself immediately. It's called self-defense. It's allowed when it's immediate. Someone punch you, you gotta write the puncher back. Someone punch you, you don't have to go tell somebody first and then come back and punch. No, you can immediately retaliate. So that's the exception to the rule, is immediate self-defense. However, if there's an opportunity to discuss the matter fully, right? Through negotiations, mediation, right? Arbitration, conciliation, then that's when the Security Council come and say, "Let's talk. Let's be arbitrators here and try to sell this dispute peacefully." Alright, okay. Section 2.
2. The term "enemy state," as used in Paragraph 1 of this article, applies to any state which during the Second World War has been an enemy of any signatory of the present Charter.
Okay, so an enemy state was already labeled as, let's say, Germany, et cetera. At that time, 1945, Germany was the enemy state, okay? So now in present day, 21st century, who's the enemy state? Or anyone that's just basically a belligerent that's maintaining what? Threats, breaches, and aggression on planet Earth. That's the basic definition, especially aggression, right? Because the United Nations has taken the time to actually define the word aggression. And aggression really means it's more so on a war crime type of level, right? Now, don't get me wrong, there's different levels to aggression, but your own Moroccan state would have to come up with legislation that talks about the varying degrees of aggression. However, international law really kind of looked at it from a perspective of war, et cetera, right? Hostage-taking, terrorist acts, those are acts of aggression, okay? Article 54.
Article 54. "The Security Council shall, at all times, be kept fully informed of activities undertaken or in contemplation under regional arrangements or by regional agencies for the maintenance of international peace and security."
Okay, so listen to this, Moors, especially Moroccan states, right? Article 54, it's very interesting. Says, "The Security Council shall, at all times, be kept fully informed of activities undertaken or in contemplation under regional arrangements or by regional agencies for the maintenance of international peace and security." So if our Moroccan states are having problems with the United States' international organization or any of their several constituent charter states, then it's our job to let the Security Council of the United Nations know if there's some type of act of aggression, especially if our regional agency, i.e. the WRC, is still not being able to take the proper steps forward to manage friendly relations. If in fact, there's something that's potentially imminent, such as war, then it's our obligation as Moroccan states to let the United Nations know that our arbitration and conciliation has fallen apart and it appears as though we're about to go to war. War is imminent. We gotta let the Security Council know what's up. You see, these are instructions. The Charter of the United Nations in itself is law. It's a treaty. It has specific instructions, right? Specific performance. We have to adhere to this, okay? What does this mean? If the Moroccans are having problems with the Americans, then we got backup, don't we? If in fact, we're in the right and they're in the wrong and we're trying to peacefully sell it, we can go let the referee know what's up. Why is it that the Moors, Americans have never been able to contact the ICJ to get assistance? It's because the ICJ, when you reach out to them, they say, "We don't help individuals, we only assist states." And the states authorize authority, which are the government officials of said state. And this is why when Tajri Bay said, "Oh, it's kind of already there, we can fix it." Well, how much longer are we gonna wait on Tajri Bay to fix it? Another 50 years? I don't think so. That's what we gotta understand. We gotta move forward, and we have moved forward. Okay, Moors. Alright, so with that being said, that's the last article, okay? Of what's commonly known as regional arrangements, okay? But that's important to understand, right? So what's happening? The Moors are following the instructions. So you can have some Moors out there say, "Well, Nobudra..." So you can have some Moors out there say, well, Noor Drahli didn't say that, uh, excuse me. Noor Drahli's literature is not law, it's literature. And this is the problem Moors are having. They don't know the difference between literature and legislation. They don't know the difference between a book and a constitution, they don't know the difference between a book and a treaty. They don't know the difference between a book and international law. And this is what we have to start underscoring. I I I love Noor Drahli, but Noor never said to worship him. Anytime you 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 become so blinded that you can't put down literature in order to pick up international law. Then that's on you, that's your self-determination. So if you want to keep reading literature, fine. But whatever you do, don't get in the way of everybody else who's studying legislation. And what is legislation? Law. And you cannot put literature and law on the same table at the same time. The two don't mix, so please, Moors. Stop trying to put Noor Drahli's literature in the same conversation as law. Because people gonna look at you and say, I think you need to take an insanity test. And that's what Moors gotta understand. This is why the United States and the several union states keep giving Moors insanity tests. Cause Moors claim they're jurists. They understand, they think they understand jurisprudence and they don't. Now, ask any Moor out there, if you the defendant in any case. Tell me when did you bring Noor Drahli's literature into that municipal courtroom as your defense? You didn't do it. So stop doing it on YouTube if you're not doing it in the municipal court. Stop wasting people's time. Noor Drahli want us to move forward and decolonize. You gotta understand what's happening here. What did Noor Drahli said? He said, we weren't supposed to be in what? Their courts. Have Moors actually taken the time to examine and qualify what exactly Noor was saying? If Noor was saying we're not supposed to be in their courts. Then what he was saying is, we're not Americans, only Americans should be using American courts. Therefore, if he's saying don't use their courts, then what was Noor trying to say? He said, we supposed to have our own Moroccan courts. Cause Noor Drahli said we're descendants of Moroccans. Noor Drahli said that word from all bodies what? Moroccan? Since the empire Morocco and you still got Moors out there saying, who said that you're Moroccan? Well, I ain't gotta worry about what you said, cause I'm reading the treaties, I'm reading law, thank you very much. I am over it with literature. I love Noor Drahli, I read his literature like I read other things that is interesting literature. But Noor said it what? A divine and national movement. You know what national means? State. You're not a national unless you're a national of a state. But Moors keep meet intermixing state and church. And that's the problem, they think the church is a state and it is not, alright? Let's continue. So what my point I was making is this, Moors. So therefore, the Moroccans have moved forward, right? We as Moroccan nationals that are recognized by our Moroccan state constitutions. Have put together regional arrangements, commonly known as the WRC. Because the Moroccans are competent enough to know to read instructions and follow instructions in order to settle disputes. Right, based upon what? Threats, breaches and aggression. And you have to now deal with disputes how? State on state, that's how you settle disputes, let's move on. Okay, so speaking of regional arrangements. So the Moroccan states have put together a convention in the empire Morocco. The Wazir Regional Council, that's a regional agency, right? So it's an international, intergovernmental organization. That works on behalf of all the Moroccan states that established this through their constitutional procedures, what do I mean? Right here is what you call constitutional procedures. So it was ratified through our states, through the legislative branch, through the mothers, the Metropolitan Council. Had to agree to the language of this convention, the convention is a treaty, so this is a treaty amongst Moroccan states. So through our constitutional uh procedures, number one, uh, Noor.
One, signed at Alodium Morris Pradium Ante Colorado on January thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Two, ratified by the House of Dalai Lazzies on March thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Three, ratified by the Wazir Al-Rais on March thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Four, deposited with the United Nations Secretariat on April fourteenth of twenty twenty-three. Five, deposited with the Wazir Regional Council on April fourteenth of twenty twenty-three. Six, entered into full force and effect on April fourteenth of twenty twenty-three. Seven, promulgated by the Wazir Al-Rais on April twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-three.
So that's called a circle seven constitutional procedures in order to bring this treaty into full force and effect. We have to check the boxes, right? That's the obligation of international law, right? And then we have to ponder the United Nations in accordance to Article one oh two of the Charter. Okay, in order to put it on the record, alright? Okay, so now that we've established that, this is your regional agency, right? Your regional arrangement in accordance to the Charter, we following instructions, okay? So now look what we've done, okay? So now, we've got the Wazir Regional Council in the seal and guess what? We had one, two, three, four, five, six states and now we've added a seventh state, okay? So I wanna say congratulations uh to the head of state of uh what's commonly known as Serum, right? The name is our seventh state that's been added, okay? The seventh state is Skarou State Republic of Morocco, which is Ante North Carolina. So North Carolina has a succession state, right? A Moroccan state, a modern Moroccan state called Skarou State Republic of Morocco. The acronym is uh Serum, alright? Serum, it's pretty cool, right? So I wanna say congratulations uh to the head of state, Aziz Hanoum Bay. Congratulations to you, good brother, congratulations to your uh legislative branch and also to your judicial branch, alright? So what's happening now, Moors? So now we've got, we've got seven Moroccan states, right? Seven, okay, that's circle seven. Uh, obviously, we we already, y'all already know, we've got, we've got the first three states. Was Alodium Morris Pradium Ante Colorado, which is Ante Colorado. Then we had Alodium Morris Pradium Numeka, which is Ante Oregon. Then we had Alodium Morris Pradium Ante Georgia, which is Ante Georgia. Ante means before, before the colonists showed up. Now we're restoring the land under post- dominium per consanguinity, right? We also have Maroue State Republic, Great Seal of Ante Indiana. And we got Alodium Moroccan Pradium Ante Michigan, okay? Which is Ante Michigan. And then we got Dia Dia Mentis Alorium Morocco Prius Texas, which is Ante Texas. And obviously, last but not least, our newest addition as a member state, a recognized state. Okay, we recognize this state as Skarou State Republic of Morocco, which is Ante North Carolina, right? So going back to the beginning. So their acronym is AMPAC, right? Then you've just got simply uh uh Numeka, we call them Numeka. Then we got AMPAD, right? AMPAD, then we got Maroue, alright? We got AMPAM, right? And Texas is um uh Dempti, Dempti, and then we've got Serum. That's pretty cool, right? Alright, so with that being said, there was also a formal um induction of the Wazir. To the Regional Council, okay? So Wazir Aziz Hanoum Bay and his state was added to the WRC. Alright, so let's take a look at that. Okay, so this is the actual recognition of.
These love and prosperity to all humanity on planet Earth. Skarou. Greetings to the members and guests of the the Wazir Regional Council that is Oregon's. We are gathered here today to honor and acknowledge our newest member of the Wazir Regional Council. Wazir Aziz Hanoum Bay, of of Skarou State Republic of Morocco. Also, a newly recognized state in the empire of Morocco. Today is August nineteenth twenty twenty-three, approximately twelve thirty P M Eastern. First, we will start off with all the recognized Wazirs announcing themselves, starting with me, I am Abdul Smith Bay. Uh, Wazir of Alodium Morris Pradium Ante Georgia and Chairman of the Wazir Regional Council.
Hello, uh, my name is Deandre Dre Bay, Wazir of Alodium Morris Pradium Ante Colorado and Vice Chairman of the WRC.
I am Amir Asaf Al, Co-Chairman of the WRC and Wazir uh of Alodium Morris Pradium of Numeka.
Hello, I am Akil Safaya Zim Bay, Wazir of Rus State Republic. Also, Co-Chairman of the WRC as well as President of the Trusteeship Council.
Islam, I am Mia Mor Bay, Wazir of Alodium Moroccan Pradium Ante Michigan. Also, Wazir Member of the WRC Council.
Islam. Next, we will begin the ceremony with the oath taken to formally accept the Wazir as a member of the WRC.
Aye.
Aye, Aziz Hanoum Bay.
Hereby affirm.
Hereby affirm.
To uphold the duty and honor.
To uphold the duty and honor.
Of the office of member of the WRC.
Of the office of member of the WRC.
And pledge to strengthen.
And pledge to strengthen.
Regional peace and security.
Regional peace and security.
On behalf of the member states.
On behalf of the member states.
Of the United States of Morocco.
Of the United States of Morocco.
And in conformity.
And in conformity.
With the principles.
With the principles.
Of the convention.
Of the convention.
Of the Wazir Regional Convention.
Of the Wazir Regional Convention.
Congratulations, Wazir.
Thank you, Islam.
Islam, brother.
Alright, so we wanna say thank you once again. Uh, to the WRC for helping us to take steps to decolonize and uplift. Father humanity in a very competent way, we're utilizing international law, right? We we established the WRC because we followed the instructions of the Charter, imagine that. Tajri Bay is not gonna teach you about the Charter, the the grand sheiks are not gonna teach you about the Charter. But we're learning about the Charter, we're following suit, right? This is the same thing the Africans did with their fifty-five states, they established the African Union. That's an international, intergovernmental organization that represents all the African states. And that's exactly what we're doing, so so far we've got seven, right? We hope to have fifty plus, right? Seals up there that represents Moroccan states, fifty plus, keep that in mind now. Where everybody should understand. Is that good brother Abdul Smith Bay is not only the head of state. Of Alodium Morris Pradium Ante Georgia, right? But he's also the Chairman of the WRC, so he's in effect the leader of all the Moroccan states. We recognize him as the principal organ of our states, I mean, he's the principal of our states. We recognize him as overseeing the centralized government of the empire Morocco for Moroccans. Let me say that again, for Moroccans, Moroccan nationals. You got Moorish Americans out there in the feelings, don't worry about it, Moorish Americans. We ain't talking about you, since you don't say you're Moroccan, then don't worry about it. Brother Abdul, brother Abdul is the leader of Moroccan nationals, keep that in mind, I'm making a distinction right now, okay? But trust, trust me when I tell you, the United States knows exactly who Abdul Smith Bay is. The several governors of the several union states know exactly who Abdul Smith Bay is, they know he shall be respected. He's the head of the international, intergovernmental organization that represents the centralized government of the Moorish Empire. They know he's checked all the applicable boxes that all the African states did, that all the European states did, right? Et cetera. They know exactly who it is and he shall be respected, and that's what Moors need to understand, alright? So thank you very much to uh Chairman Abdul Smith Bay of the WRC. Okay, now, what's the purpose, the true purpose of the WRC? What's the true purpose of a regional arrangement, right? A regional agency such as the WRC? Was to help all the Moroccan states to help decolonize the empire Morocco, right? To seek friendly relations with the United States, so that way we can start to interface through one spokesperson. Right, when you're dealing with the United States through decolonization, they don't wanna talk to a bunch of Moors. It is the obligation of the spokesperson of the international, intergovernmental organization commonly known as the WRC. This is the spokesperson on behalf of all the Moroccan nationals, right? That must be understood, so therefore, good brother Abdul Smith Bay speaks on behalf of all these states, these seven states. This circle seven states right here, they're recognized states, you see? So when the when the United States starts to deal with us, they'll deal with the WRC. And not all these states individually, but yet they'll operate through this one seal called the WRC. So the United States will have their bald eagle and over here we'll have our seal, you see that? Our seal says Wazir Regional Council, Empire Morocco, see that? That's what they'll see, alright? And that's how we'll interface with them. Because we need to be consistent when we speak to them and not have them speak to fifty different Moroccan territories all having different ideologies. We need to have one voice, one spokesperson, one nationality, right? And that's Moroccan, we're moving forward, Moors, with or without the Moorish American teachers. Alright, so with that being said, what is the obligation of Moors? Our job was to decolonize. Why was it our job to decolonize? Because the Act of Asperus in nineteen oh six and its seven chapters was about decolonization. It's a decolonization treaty in order to bring the Moors back into sovereign government. You have to understand the obligations of the Act of Asperus and its one hundred and twenty-three articles, okay? But it was also the obligation of Moors first to return back to Morocco through what's commonly known as the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty. Article fifteen, paragraph one, these are treaty obligations, it's not a maybe. It's not a should I do it, no, it's an obligation, treaty is the supreme law of land. That must be understood, alright? So our job was to decolonize, right? To the United Nations, the United Nations has set forth reforms to help decolonize, right? Decolonize, that's what our obligation is, is Moors, this is what other Moors have been doing on planet Earth already. United Nations has helped over eighty territories to decolonize, but yet the Moors in the West are still talking about literature. Instead of international law and decolonization. They still don't realize, they're still subjugated while reading literature. They don't know the difference between literature and legislation, okay? United Nations deals with legislation. Okay, let's read a little bit about this, Noor.
When the United Nations was founded in nineteen forty-five, some seven hundred and fifty million people. Nearly a third of the world's population lived in territories that were dependent on colonial powers. Today, there are seventeen non-self-governing territories remaining and fewer than two million people live in them. The wave of decolonization which changed the face of the planet was born with the U.N. And represents the world body's first great success. As a result of decolonization, many territories became independent and joined the United Nations. The international trusteeship system was established by the United Nations Charter. Affirming the principle of self-determination. The Charter describes the responsibilities of states for territories under their administration as a sacred trust. In which the interests of their inhabitants are paramount.
Alright, so the United Nations is helping regional agencies. And any people who've been colonized, if those people are seeking a declaration of independence. Then the United Nations has an obligation to assist the indigenous people who are seeking independence, right? Those people are saying, we're distinct. Those people are saying, we're distinct from the colonists. Well, what makes you distinct from the colonists? Well, the colonists say they're Americans, and then you turn around and say, you're American as well, then that means you're not distinct from the colonists. However, when you say the colonists is Americans and you're Moroccan, that's distinct. That's what Moors got to understand. You can't decolonize and say, I don't want to be American no more. Then you decolonize and say, and now I'm the true American. Wait, wait, time out, wait, what? You, wait, time out, well, I thought you was colonized by the Americans, but now you turn around and say, you're the American, well, what, what kind of foolishness is this? Moors got to study, Noah Dry Lee said, where descendants of Moroccans, that's called what? Pedigree, that's consanguinity. How the heck do you turn around and say, now you're American? This don't make no sense to me, let's move on. Alright, so now, the United Nations is helping people, Moors on planet Earth to decolonize, but the Moors in the West still run around like a three-ring circus. Alright, so check this out, here's a video, let's listen to it. The, the, the title is Explainer, United Nations and Decolonization Past to Present. So, it's going to start off a little scratchy, because it's going to talk about the first United Nations Secretary General that was speaking from nineteen forty-five, and it's going to speed up to present day, so it's going to sound a little scratchy, like an old-school record player. Then it's going to fast-forward, okay? So, it might sound like a VHS tape too, you know, like, uh, uh, your boy, your boy Kujo, his, his voice is on VHS tapes, right? So, you might get a little scratchy record, then a little VHS tape, then it's going to clear up, alright? So, pay attention, Kujo, alright, here we go. Alright, here we go. Here we go, shake it out, Kujo, here we go.
Colonial powers and their supporters try to.
That's Kujo talking, by the way, you hear how scratchy it is, old-school, listen.
Justifying in humanitarian, economic, social, and cultural terms.
The colonial system was imposed by force on many peoples of many races and religions.
And we are continuing to try and solve problems with the methods that are available to us.
While us in our efforts to eradicate colonialism in all its forms and manifestations from the face of the earth.
We are searching in a new era of hope and hope of tourism.
Since its founding, the United Nations have been engaged in decolonization processes around the globe, and that work continues today. Seventeen non-self-governing territories remain. The United Nations will continue to assist, but also to play their role, the missing powers, non-self-governing territories, Member States, and the Special Committee on Decolonization.
When the U N was formed at the end of World War Two, seventy-two non-self-governing territories and eleven trust territories were identified as under the control of administering authorities. In nineteen ninety-four, Palau, the last remaining trust territory gained independence, but as of twenty twenty, seventeen N S G Ts yet remain. Today, the majority are islands in the Caribbean and Pacific. The United Nations remains steadfast in its efforts to end colonialism around the world. Let's take a look at a quick history of the United Nations and decolonization. Chapter eleven of the founding charter of the U N addresses the issue of non-self-governing territories directly. It highlights the responsibilities of the administering powers to promote the well-being of the inhabitants of the territories and to develop their self-government. It also obliges administering powers to give information about their territories to the Secretary General. This is reflected in annual working papers prepared by the Decolonization Unit in the Department of Political and Peacebuilding Affairs. Beginning in the nineteen sixties, the General Assembly resolved to support decolonization strengthened even further. A series of resolutions were passed that sought to assist the peoples of the territories to achieve self-determination according to their particular circumstances. The first, Resolution fifteen fourteen, has come to be known as the Declaration on Decolonization. Further resolutions identify the ways in which peoples of these territories can achieve self-government. They include becoming a sovereign and independent state, free association with an independent state, integration into an independent state, or the emergence of any other political status freely determined by the people. The Special Committee on Decolonization is commonly referred to as the C twenty-four because of its original composition of twenty-four member states. As a subsidiary organ of the U N General Assembly, the C twenty-four is devoted to monitoring and making recommendations regarding N S G Ts. Today, the C twenty-four holds regional seminars on decolonization in either the Pacific or Caribbean every May. And for two weeks in June, they hold a substantive session in New York to examine the situations in the territories in depth and the issue of decolonization in general. These meetings allow the C twenty-four to hear views of the N S G Ts, the administering powers, and other stakeholders and petitioners on the decolonization process. The recommendations that come out of the substantive session of the C twenty-four are submitted to the Fourth Committee of the General Assembly, which in turn considers the recommendations and submits draft resolutions and decisions to the General Assembly Plenary for adoption at the end of the year. Additionally, institutional support for N S G Ts from U N entities, specialized agencies, and international organizations associated with the U N is important and kept under consideration by the C twenty-four and the U N Economic and Social Council. With the consent of the administering power, the C twenty-four can dispatch a visiting mission to observe conditions underground and gather firsthand information. These visiting missions enhance the capacity of the United Nations to assist the peoples of the non-self-governing territories. Recognized as an important tool, the General Assembly has requested that the C twenty-four undertake at least one visiting mission per year. As an example, in twenty nineteen, at the territory's request, the C twenty-four sent a visiting mission to Montserrat, still recovering from a devastating series of volcanic eruptions that began in nineteen ninety-five. The visiting mission held meetings with key members of the government, representatives from civil society, and other stakeholders. In this way, the C twenty-four is able to report on the needs of the territories. When the United Nations was established, seven hundred fifty million people, nearly one-third of the world's population at that time, lived in territories that were dependent on colonial powers. As of twenty twenty, nearly two million people continued to live in non-self-governing territories, the majority of which are on small islands that faced the added challenges of sea level rise and increasingly destructive natural disasters. While major strides have taken place, decolonization continues to be a priority for the United Nations. Through determination, perseverance, pragmatism, and continued cooperation and coordination, the United Nations is committed to the complete eradication of colonialism once and for all.
So, I thank the Moors for taking the time to listen to that video, right? Now, here's the interesting part about, uh, what I just played. You have Moors out there that say, uh, thank you very much, Jay, for playing that video, but did Noah Dry Lee say that? And you just got to look at me and shake your head and say, I cannot believe I just showed you legislative forms. They were talking about Resolution fifteen fourteen, that's a decolonization law, international law. In the video, you saw Resolution twenty-six, twenty-five. That's another decolonization law, international law, about decolonization. The United Nations helped over eighty-plus territories to decolonize, and a Moor will look at me after I said all that and say, uh, let me ask you the question again, Brother Jay. Did Noah Dry Lee say that? No, let me tell you what Noah Dry Lee told you. He said, I'm going to keep the Europeans here long enough to teach you government, so you can run governments, and guess what we're learning from the United Nations? How to run governments. But see, the Moors keep forgetting that Noah said that as well, right? Oh, they're just so selective. I tell you what, you keep reading literature, and I'm going to keep reading legislation, and I'll meet you at the finish line, how about that, right? That's what's going to happen, I'm just going to keep on going. I'll see you later, alligator. What else? Alright, so, on this same United Nations website, okay? Let's talk about the Africans. Look, the United Nations is celebrating their seventy-fifth year, they were looking back at Africa. Right here, it says sixty years of independence, a wave of independence spread across Africa. Nineteen sixty marks a turning point, the majority of African territories gained independence. So, they're celebrating sixty years of independence. How long have the Moorish Americans been celebrating independence? Well, the answer is none, no years. Not Moorish Americans, Moorish Americans are still dependent people. They're still subjugated people, and don't realize you're acquiescing and consenting to come under the jurisdiction of the United States. But if your Moorish American teachers had read to you international law and had read to you about the treaty, what the treaty said about the treaty in Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, Paragraph one, the Moors would have fixed this decades ago. I started studying five years ago, but the Charter came out in nineteen forty-five, before basically all the Moorish Americans were even born. But yet, they still haven't studied international law. Something ain't right. We're going to talk about this in the near future, but let's check out this video so Moorish Americans can see what the Africans are doing, and they'll turn around and say, uh, thank you, Jay Bay, for showing this video about Africa, but, uh, did Noah Dry Lee say that? Alright, let's check it out, okay, listen. Look, look at all these states, these are states, Moors.
We have to machine common, not to turn the simple human values, which are our common heritage, into the firm foundation on which we may unite our strength and live together in peace.
Okay, Moors, so, what, what should we really take away from decolonization? When it comes to decolonization, we start learning that even Good Brother, um, Ilbeli Shabazz, right? Ilbeli Shabazz, commonly known as Malcolm X, was hanging out in Africa, right? This is what we learned in nineteen sixties, everybody knows Malcolm X was hanging out in Egypt, everybody saw the pyramids, well, he wasn't over there looking at pyramids, he was over there meeting with the heads of states, right? He was over there meeting with people who had declared their independence. The Africans now were becoming Member States of the United Nations, and, and, and Malcolm, i.e. Ilbeli Shabazz, was learning, okay, how do I do this whole statehood thing, right? So, next you know, uh, uh, Ilbeli Shabazz comes back, and he, his next video was, I think his next video was called, um, The Ballad or the Bullet? And in that video, he's talking about, okay, uh, we, we got to, we got to put together, uh, nationalism, right? It should be about nationalism, that's the purpose, right? Don't worry about your religion, don't worry about your organizations, we got to do what the African states did, we, we got to nationalize, right? Then the next you know, he gets neutralized, right? Because Good Brother Ilbeli Shabazz was hanging out with the United Nations, right? So, next you know, Martin Luther King starts talking about going to Washington, D.C. to get that check, because Martin Luther King is saying out loud, um, the Negro is what? Langished in his own homeland. This is how Martin Luther King is talking out loud. He was letting everybody know, these people you call Negro, Black, and Color are actually the indigenous people of the land, they did not come from Africa. They was here when Christopher Columbus got here. But these people labeled as Negro, Black, and Color are Moroccans, falsely labeled as Negroes, Blacks, and Colors, and Minorities, falsely labeled as if they brought all of us over here from Africa, and that's a lie, and even Martin Luther King knew that, right? Next you know, the Kennedys get assassinated. All this is happening during the time when decolonization was happening. So, the African states is decolonizing in the late fifties, all throughout the sixties, and all throughout the seventies, right? So, the United Nations is assisting them, okay? And it's about the Declaration on the Granting of Independence to colonial countries and peoples, and, and the Moors at that time were not studying. They run around hiding in their temples, right? So, what, what's the question we should be asking, okay? Up here, I have a series of questions, okay? Let's keep it one-hundred, let, let's ask a question, and let's see what the answer is, okay? Alright, Noah, if you can read from the top, the question.
Who's teaching the legal due process of international law and decolonization for our col- uh, colonized people to reclaim external state sovereignty in the Empire of Morocco?
Okay, so the question is, who's teaching the legal due process of international law and decolonization for our colonized people to reclaim external state sovereignty in the Empire of Morocco, right? How do we decolonize? And not just decolonize, we, the Moors are not going to accept an internal state status like the Indian reservations have accepted an internal self-determination status, right? They're still governed by the United States, but the Moors are seeking external, external state sovereignty. That means that now, we're governing Morocco, we govern over the United States of America, we govern over the United States International Organization, we govern over all their several charter states. That's what external means, that we are the sovereigns. Why? It's because the United States of America is located where? In Morocco, we'll talk about that, right? So, what's the question again? Who's teaching the legal due process, right? Of international law and decolonization for our colonized people to reclaim external state sovereignty in the Empire of Morocco? Okay, so let's, let's start with the first question, they got a series of questions here. Okay, Noah, from the top.
One, are the leaders of the civic Moorish Americans teaching the due process of international law and decolonization for our people? No. Two, are the leaders of the Moorish American temples teaching the due process of international law and decolonization for our people? No. Three, are the leaders of the Nation of Islam teaching the due process of international law and decolonization for our people? No. Four, are the leaders of the church teaching the due process of international law and decolonization for our people? No. Five, are the leaders of the H B C U's teaching the due process of international law and decolonization to our people? No. Are the leaders of the N double A C P teaching the due process of international law and decolonization for our people? No. Are the leaders of Black Lives Matter teaching the due process of international law and decolonization for our people? No. Are the leaders of the Indian tribes teaching the due process of international law and decolonization for our people? No. Are the leaders of the United States or the governors exposing the due process of international law and decolonization to the naturalized American and Moroccan people? No. Ten, however, are the leaders of the modern Moorish state governments exposing and teaching the due process of international law and decolonization to the Moroccans and the Americans yet? Yes.
Alright, so what we have here is a basic questionnaire, right? This could've went a lot longer. I could've added all kinds of different organizations and groups, et cetera. But the reality is, is when you start asking these basic questions, what are the people doing that's claiming they've been colonized? What are the people doing in terms of trying to get their freedom and liberty? What are the churches doing? What are the temples doing? What's the NAACP doing? What's the HBCUs doing?
Marching and praying.
Everybody's marching and praying, right? So what we have to understand is we cannot depend on these leaders anymore, these particular organizations. They're not doing their job to help us to decolonize. Keep in mind, the Charter of the United Nations has been around since nineteen forty-five. The United Nations has helped over eighty-plus territories to decolonize. They helped Africa that was colonized. They helped all the islands to be colonized. So why the heck are these so-called teachers of these organizations doing anything to study the due process that the African states took? They're not doing it. They're all simply just either selling out or either they're accepting, consenting, and acquiescing to be subjugated people while simultaneously pretending like they're trying to help the people. But yet, they know these truths I'm talking about. They've always known, alright? So at the end of the day, number ten, however, are the leaders of the modern Moorish state governments exposing and teaching the due process of international law and decolonization to Moroccans and Americans? Yes, we're doing that. Who's doing that? Okay. This is who's doing it. These Moroccan states are teaching. They're exposing the truth, the due process of international law. No one else is doing this. The civic Moors aren't teaching international law and decolonization regarding the Charter, regarding the United Nations resolutions. They're not doing it. They don't teach about France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two. They don't teach about, right? But yet, these seven modern Moroccan states that have all recognized each other are operating through the WRC, YZ Regional Council. And we're teaching, we're exposing, right? We're seeking decolonization. But what kind of decolonization? It's called external state self-determination. External, not internal. External, meaning that we're over the United States of America. Our jurisdiction is over the United States International Intergovernmental Organization. And our states are over all of their several charter states. We're not beneath them. We're over them. We start to now govern what's called the Great Enterprise. And what's the Great Enterprise? That is the corporation commonly known as the United States and all of their charters underneath them. That's what we govern because they're located where? In Morocco, in the Empire of Morocco, right? Okay. What's the problem? This is the problem. It's the teaching. This is an image of some members of a Moorish Science Temple. And as you can see, they're paying allegiance to the United States of America's flag. They've got a Moroccan flag there as well, but they got it to the right. So then you know out loud, they're accepting their subjugated status as being Americanized Moors. I.e. Americanized Moor Moroccans. They don't wanna be, I mean, they don't wanna be Moroccans no more. They wanna be Americans. I got no problem with that. However, what do I actually have an issue with? Is because they go off and they teach other Moors that we are Americans. That's wrong answer. You gotta at least tell Moors their options they have. You gotta tell Moors, you can choose to continue to be subjugated, naturalized Moroccans. Or you gotta tell Moors that they have an option to return to Morocco, i.e. Empire of Morocco, and pledge their allegiance to a Moroccan state government. But there lies the problem. None of the Moors from the Moorish Science Temple or none of the Moors from the civic Moors have never taken the time to declare our independence, draft a constitution with three branches government, become members to the Charter, and follow the instructions of Article one oh two of the Charter in order to get back into statehood. We never took the time to put the states back together. So you got these teachers out here talking about nation-state, nation-state. Even Taraka Bay said, "We have to establish a nation-state." Well, why didn't they do it? They just keep talking about it like it's some implied task that they ain't gotta worry about for now. Well, in the meantime, they're paying allegiance to the United States of America, which means they come under the civil and criminal jurisdiction of the United States. Then they get upset, these Moorish Science Temple Moors get upset with the civic Moors 'cause at the very least, at least the civic Moors are trying to do something to get from underneath the jurisdiction of the United States. Even though what the civic Moors are doing is called sovereign citizen principles because their Moorish American civic Moorish teachers didn't teach them international law. So you can't blame the students. You have to blame the teachers, right? So the Moorish Science Temple is accepting their subjugated status by pledging allegiance to the American flag. And then they turn around and they take that sickness and pass it on to the next generation. And this has been going on ever since nineteen thirty. Nineteen thirty, Noble Drali is gone in nineteen twenty-nine, nineteen thirty. Everybody now is putting the flag, the American flag to the left, Moroccan flag to the right. But when Noble Drali was here, he had the Moroccan flag to the left and the United States of America's flag to the right. Noble knew what was up. He understood statehood. He knew who had the dominant side of sovereign versus the right side of the personnel being second in terms of power. No one knew who was the true, um, people who were seeking asylum in Morocco. And that was the Americans, ever since seventeen seventy-six, right? So this is the problem. Miseducation. Now, I got nothing against these Moors, the Moorish Science Temple. And I say this as a, out of respect. I've never had an issue out of the Moorish Science Temple. But this is AMPAC Study Session. This is an educational platform. I gotta use this as part of my educational platform, right? So I have nothing against these Moors in particular. This is just an image. Okay, I've seen this image on YouTube, so I got it on YouTube, right? But what I will say is, if these are the leaders of the Moorish Science Temple, of their particular temple, then I would ask them, have they taken the time to study international law? Are they telling the members of their temple the truth about these treaties? Are they telling the members the truth about the fact that the Charter has already expressed language to help Moors to decolonize the Empire of Morocco? That's the question to them. They got an answer to that very soon. This ain't gonna take no two, three, four, five years before they gotta answer the question. This is happening fast, right? Okay, what's up? Noble, can you read this out loud for the Moorish Science Temple Grand Sheiks to understand, from the top?
International Court of Justice, Reports of Judgments, Advisory Opinions, and Orders, Case Concerning Rights of Nationals of the United States of America in Morocco, France Versus United States of America, Judgment of August seventh nineteen fifty-two, August twenty-seventh nineteen fifty-two.
Okay, thank you. So I'm talking to the Moorish Science Temple Grand Sheiks. Grand Sheiks, have you read this case out loud to your members? This case, right? This is case law. From a world court is talking about Moors. They refer to the Moors in here as subjects and proteges, okay? Because that's our status in the treaties. We're considered Moor subjects. And sometimes they refer to us as proteges. So my question to the Moorish Science Temple Grand Sheiks, have you read this case out loud to them? Well, I already know the answer is no. You know how I know it's no? Because even the civic Moorish teachers don't even read this case out loud. Right, so both the temple Moors and the civic Moors don't know nothing about this case because of the leadership, alright? We gotta talk about this because if we wanna uplift fallen humanity, then we should go back and read case law. Any attorney work their way will tell you three things. What is law about? Law is about what? Statutes, right? Statutes and regulations. And then you go back and look at what? Case law. So it's about law and case law. 'Cause judges go and now adjudicate, right? They're judging case based upon what? The laws. So you go look at both the laws and you look at case law. And you put those next to each other. You look at constitutions, et cetera. You look at law, substantive law, not belief. But you look at substantive law. And my question to the Moorish Science Temple Grand Sheiks, have you read this case? And if you haven't, I suggest you do so. Because you're gonna hear a whole lot more about this Grand Sheik. Your students and your members of your temple are gonna hear about this case and they're gonna be asking you questions pretty soon. I guarantee you that. I don't promise you. I guarantee you, they're going to be asking you questions. So I would encourage you to read this case. And at the same time, Grand Sheiks, I also say this to Taj Reed Bay. Taj Reed Bay needs to take the time to read this case out loud to the Moorish Americans, civic Moors, because they're gonna be asking Taj questions about this case too, alright? Now, why do I really read this? Okay, Grand Sheiks of the temple. You see what the case is citing as citing? It says, "Case Concerning Rights of Nationals of the United States of America in Morocco." So the United States of America is in Morocco. Morocco is not in America. You see that? This is a world court. A world court. So therefore, Moroccans are not in America. You see that? I'm gonna say it again to you, Grand Sheiks. Moroccans are not in America. So since the Moroccans are not in America and Americans are actually in Morocco, then I'm gonna ask you the question. Why are you acting like you're a Moroccans in America? Why are you acting like Moroccans in America? Why are you acting like the Moroccan flag, this particular Kingdom of Morocco flag is in America? This flag is always supposed to be to the left of this flag, no matter what. No matter, even though the Kingdom of Morocco is a provincial state government in the Empire of Morocco, it makes no difference, even though they're a small little state within the greater empire, you should never put a Moroccan flag to the right. The Moroccan flag is always supposed to be to the left. The Moroccan flag is always supposed to be to the left. Why would you turn around and put the United States of America flag to the left? It's because you said you're Americans. Well, if you're Americans, then why do you keep picking up a Moroccan flag? This doesn't make sense to me. If you wanna be Americans, then be Americans. But when you say you're Moorish Americans, Moorish means Moroccan. So you really said you're Moroccan-American. But the treaties say you gotta choose between the entire submission to the laws of the Empire of Morocco, which means you're supposed to be one hundred percent Moroccan, or you'll continue to be one percent American, but you can't keep intermixing these two. You gotta stop doing this, Temple Moors. Either you pledge your allegiance to the left or you pledge your allegiance to the right. But you gotta stop intermixing the two. That's the truth. Okay, okay, listen. I'm gonna say it again. In this case, it says, "The Case Concerning Rights of Nationals of the United States of America." Who are the nationals of America? That's the thirteen colonies that now is turning to fifty-plus colonies. It's Americans. Moors are not Americans. Noble Drali said, "We're descendants of Moroccans." That's pedigree. It's consignority. You can't change your bloodline. So what you're saying is you pledge allegiance is a political status of being naturalized as American. America is your stepmother who adopted you. And you don't wanna bring yourself back to your mother, which is Morocco, the Empire of Morocco, through a Moroccan state. So the Moors are all being either lazy or complacent 'cause you don't wanna take the time to establish a Moroccan state. And I don't know why, but we're gonna find out. It's a matter of time what's really going on. But I'll say it again. The United States of America is in Morocco. Morocco is not in America. Moroccans are not in America. What you are is you've been naturalizing your jurisdiction, but you still stand on the land of Morocco. And you need to act like it. Let's continue. Look at this. This is a timeline, okay? After Noble Drali was assassinated by Moors, this is a timeline after he was assassinated, it started in nineteen thirty. So I got the nineteen thirties, nineteen forties, the fifties, sixties, seventies, eighties, ninety, two thousand, twenty-ten to twenty-nineteen, and twenty-twenty to current present day. That's ninety-four years. That's ninety-four years. What have the Moorish Americans from a temple Moor perspective or a civic Moor perspective done to decolonize? That's the answer. And the answer is nothing. We've been perpetrating a fraud. We've been just buffering and buffering and buffering, going around in circles, going nowhere fast. So what's happened? We did nothing in the thirties. We hid inside of the temples. That's what the Moors did. J. Edgar Hoover started looking into the Moorish Science Temple. He was already doing it since nineteen twenty-four. Keep in mind, J. Edgar Hoover came into office of the FBI in nineteen twenty-four. Noble gets assassinated in nineteen twenty-nine. Now all of a sudden, all these so-called leaders of Moorish Science Temple Incorporated start claiming they're the leaders. What did they do to pick up where Noble fell? What did they do to pick up the torch and keep marching regarding statehood? They did nothing. They further subjugated themselves. Right, so you got the nineteen thirties. Moors didn't do nothing. They sold out. Right here, nineteen thirty-three, that's from Resolution Seventy-Five from the Philadelphia Moorish Science Temple, nineteen thirty-three. They sold the Moors out and signed off on some speedy Americanized type of reform with the city of Philadelphia, right? The sellout started in nineteen thirty. Then they started showing their hand in nineteen thirty-three with Resolution Seventy-Five. That R.B. publications keeps pumping out there as if it's some document that gave us back some rights. It didn't give us back rights, it further subjugated us. Then you got the Charter nineteen forty-five. Now, ever since the Charter came out and its trusteeship council, it has helped to decolonize over eighty-plus territories. What was the Moorish Americans doing during this time? Nothing, hiding in their temples. 'Cause J. Edgar Hoover had pumped all the Moors. They all pumped out and started hiding in here. Why do you think Noble established the Old Canaanite Temple in the first place? Anybody look up the definition of temple, you'll find out it really started talking about it's some type of, um, a society, right? It's a society where people can come and gather to talk about political issues. That's what they was doing through the temples. It was a society, not necessarily a church. The temple recognized when you go and meet and have a political conversation as a group. 'Cause they wasn't allowing Moors to come together as groups, okay? So since they let Moors come together as groups, the Moors had to pretend like they was going to church in order to be able to gather in groups. J. Edgar Hoover came in and broke it all up, right? And told the Moors, uh, you better keep it to a secret society again. Keep in mind, J. Edgar Hoover was wearing a vest, his damnself. He knew all about the Moors. So then he turns around, he punks the Moors. They go back and hide into the temples again. Noble had exposed the Moors publicly. J. Edgar Hoover wanted the Moors to go back private. You gotta understand what's happening. So the Moors pumped out in the thirties. Then here comes the forties. The Charter comes out to help Moors all on planet Earth. And the only Moors that was not trying to decolonize was the Moors that was under the thumb of J. Edgar Hoover. But everywhere else on planet Earth, they started decolonizing. You see, the Africans was decolonized. So then you got the fifties, right? Here's France versus United States of America right here, nineteen fifty-two. Case comes out to tell the Moors what they need to do to get their rights, right? Did the Moorish Science Temple pick that case up in nineteen fifty-two and read it out loud? No. Did the black churches pick it up and read it out loud? No. Right? Now you got nineteen fifty-six. What happened in nineteen fifty-six? Mohammed the Fifth, right? Declared his independence. Declared his independence. Think about it. He declared independence in nineteen fifty-six. Nineteen fifty-eight, he turns around and throws the Moors underneath the bus and tries to strike the provision of the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen. He tried to strike that whole provision. To say the Moors no longer could claim themselves being Moroccans anymore. Their nationality is now obsolete, right? Did the Moorish Americans stand up and say, "Oh, hell no"? Did they do it? No. They stayed in their temples. So now you got the fifties and then, uh, Mohammed the Fifth of the Kingdom Morocco becomes a member state of the United Nations Charter, December nineteen fifty-six. He moved on forward because he looked back and said, "Well, these Moors ain't doing nothing." So Mohammed the Fifth does this partial genocide act with the United States to sign off on something that says, "Oh, we're gonna strike the Moors nationality," right? Which is a human rights violation and a genocide violation, right? But did the Moorish Americans protest? Nope. So now the African states move forward and they're establishing states. In the sixties, during the civil rights movement, the African states were over there fighting at the same time to decolonize in the sixties. So J. Edgar Hoover says, "No, no, 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 no. I'm not gonna let that happen over here." He just starts assassinating anybody that he thinks is involved with a nationalist movement. So did the Moorish Americans in the sixties come out and say, "No"? Where were the fezzes in the sixties? I mean, hell, even the KKK was marching down Pennsylvania Avenue with their hood song. Where the hell was the Moors? Where were their fezzes to march down Pennsylvania Avenue? They just disappeared. They got punked by J. Edgar Hoover. That's the truth. They went into hiding. Let me say this. Even the Baptist church had enough decency to go out and fight the good fight. The Baptists out there marching and praying with signs, getting beat up, rockstone at them, they being clubbed from the Baptist churches, from the Methodist churches. Jehovah Witness, even the rabbis was out there. The Catholic churches was out there. Where the hell was the Moor Science Temple? They was hiding. They were hiding. There were no fezzes out there. Baptist was out there. Methodist was out there. Jehovah Witness was out there. The Catholics was out there. The rabbis was out there. Everybody but the Moor Science Temple Moors. And all these quote-unquote, "black" people was fighting for rights. And it was the obligation of the Moor Science Temple to get their asses out of the temple and put together the states to help. The very brothers and sisters was out there getting their butts kicked. But they hid. Then you've got the seventies, right? You got the eighties, right? Then you got the nineties, and also now nineteen ninety-six, Million Man March. What came out of that? Nothing. There were no Constitutional Assembly. There was no Declaration of Independence. There was no Constitution drafted and concluded. It was not ratified, deposited, and promulgated in accordance with international law. There was no brief register of government. Nothing came out of nineteen ninety-six Million Man March. Nothing. But once again, that was what? Nation Islam, another church organization. All these religious organizations. Then you move on, you got the two thousands, right? Keep in mind that, uh, I talked about this in two thousand and two. Uh, there were some Moors who decolonized on an island called, um, Timor-Lesby, right? They had a good fight and they finally got their independence in two thousand and two and became a member state of the United Nations. These were Moors on an island outside of Madagascar and Australia, right? And then fast forward, in twenty eleven, you had South Sudan, who became a member state. So the last African state to decolonize, or at least get rid of the annexation, was the year twenty eleven, became a member state, South Sudan. Right? What have the Moors done all this time, all this history, all these years? What have we done to get into statehood? Not a dang old thing. But I gotta give some respect. In the year twenty seventeen, good brother C. Christopher Cannon-Bay from USARS, right? USARS is acronym for United States of America Republic. At least good brother C. Cannon-Bay made an effort to get into statehood. Now, he had misconceptions, right? He thought he could establish a constitution and claim all of Africa, all the so-called Americas, North America, Central America, South America, all adjoining islands and then turn around and deposit his constitution with the Charter statement. He never took the time to study international law. He thought he had a handle on it, but unfortunately, he missed the target, right? But I still give you props, good brother, uh, Christopher Cannon-Bay, because you deserve, you deserve some respect, brother. Because at least you tried, right? Uh, I always give credit to people that even failed. And like, when you're trying and you fail, that's not a bad thing. I mean, at least you were making an effort. Nobody else tried except for you, good brother, C. Cannon-Bay. So I want to say thank you to you, good brother. But we still need to connect so we can talk and get you on a yellow brick road so you can learn truly about what statehood is about, right? And you just, you just followed the wrong procedure. That's all. But we'll talk, brother. We get it together, alright? But I want to give brother, I want to give the USARS, uh, a shout out. Because they were the first ones to really start to get into statehood, but they just didn't understand the formalities, alright? Okay, but fast forwarding, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, alright? What happened in twenty twenty? Well, United Res Publica, where good brother Abdullah Taliel Mosi-Bay, uh, good brother Shia Malachi-Bay, and Tamara Eel put together an academy called United Res Publica, right? Where they were trying to teach statehood somewhat. Uh, and so when I attended their academy, and which for the record, I didn't want to attend because I just wanted to talk to them because I had already been studying. And I just wanted a fellowship, but they was like, "Nah, you gotta pay some notes to come and fellowship." I was like, "Oh, whatever." Because this is what Moors do. They like to charge more. So my group of Moors got together and we talked to Abdullah and he had his little academy. As y'all already know, the United Res Publica imploded, right? But AIPAC moved on, right? So here in, uh, twenty twenty-one is where we had, AIPAC had its public inauguration, right? We drafted our constitution, we ratified it, deposited it, right? We did all these things in the year twenty twenty-one. We started teaching classes in July twenty twenty-one about AIPAC study session. That's when we started, right? But what's my point? This is ninety-four years. Ninety-four years. And what have the Moors done from the Moor Science Temple or the civic Moors done to actually decolonize? What have they done to follow the footsteps of Il Belik Shabazz? Nothing. None of the Moorish Americans ever went to the United Nations. They never petitioned them in a competent way. They never declared independence. They never read the Resolution, United Nations Resolution. They never read them out loud to understand what was the fundamentals that you cannot enforce international law unless you are party to international law. And the only way to become a party to the United Nations Resolution needed what? Us dating, right? And listen, so this is, this is a lot of wasted time. That's my point. Lot of wasted time. Okay? What's up? Alright, check this out, Moors. This title says, "A Timeline of Moors Treaties and the Literature of Nour Drahli." Now, first thing first. Nour Drahli's literature is not law. It's private law. It's theology, theocratic, from a church temple. Treaties are from states and temples are not states. And states are not temples. But people keep thinking they can intermix treaties and literature as if they're the same, like they're equivalent, and they are not. But look at, look at this timeline of these eleven things I have up here. In red, I have some stuff about Nour, but let's take it from the top. We're gonna talk about treaties and diplomatic correspondence between states. And in red, this is Nour Drahli. Alright, so from the top, number one.
One, the bilateral treaty of peace and friendship of seventeen eighty-six, which is the Moroccans and Americans.
Right, so let's pause right there. So a bilateral treaty was signed between the Empire Morocco and the thirteen colonies that have called themselves Americans. How is it that the Americans was able to call themselves Americans? Is because Sidi Mohamed allowed them to call themselves Americans. Sidi Mohamed recognized the Americans in December ninth, excuse me, December seventeen seventy-seven. He first started talking to them in September, I think it was September seventeen seventy-four. But certainly seventeen seventy-four. This is why the thirteen colonies had enough confidence to turn around and dissolve their charter they have with Great Britain. Because they knew Sidi Mohamed had their back. He was gonna recognize them, but they had to take certain steps, right? So this started way before seventeen eighty-six. It actually started in seventeen seventy-four when Sidi Mohamed got involved with the thirteen colonies. But they eventually signed a treaty seventeen eighty-six and fully ratified in seventeen eighty-seven, alright? So when you see Moroccan American, that's just the name of the two parties, okay? Alright, number two.
Number two, bilateral treaty of peace and friendship of eighteen thirty-six, Moroccan and American. And number three, the multilateral treaty of Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, the Moroccan and the Europeans.
Pause. So in the Morocco, so the multilateral treaty, which is not a bilateral treaty, it's a multilateral treaty of three or more states. Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty was signed between the Empire Morocco and twelve signatory powers commonly known as the Christian powers, right? The signatory powers, all Europeans, that also include the United States of America. Right? So I just simply said Europeans, right? But they're signing the treaty with who? One single entity called the Empire Morocco, which the Sultan was sitting in the office at that time overseeing the empire of Morocco, alright? Okay, read number three again.
Multilateral Treaty of Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, Moroccan and Europeans. Number four, bilateral treaty of peace and friendship of eighteen thirty-six renewed in eighteen eighty-six. Um, number five, the multilateral treaty of the Act of Algiers of nineteen oh six, the Moroccans and the Europeans. And number six, the diplomatic body at Tangier, Morocco of nineteen oh six, the first United Nations Assembly. Number seven, bilateral treaty of Fez of nineteen twelve, Moroccan and France. And then eight, French protectorate diplomatic correspondence with the United States of nineteen thirteen. And number nine, Nour Drahli established the Canonite Temple of Moors in nineteen thirteen. And number ten, the League of Nations of nineteen twenty, which is the second United Nations Assembly. And then number eleven, Nour Drahli was assassinated by Moors in nineteen twenty-nine.
Okay, Moors, so as you can see, before Nour Drahli even became active, look at all these treaties that took place. That's a lot of history. So when Nour came into the picture, all he was trying to do is figure out how to enforce these treaties. He was trying to prophesize how we are able to enforce our own treaty rights. Okay? So you got all these bilateral and multilateral treaties. Then they also was setting up similar to the United Nations, right? The United Nations has their building in Manhattan, New York, which now has been succeeded by a Moroccan state by the name of Anthony, right? A loaded Moorish prayer hymn, Ante, New York, right? So shout out to Anthony. So, um, at this time of this timeline, Nour Drahli doesn't even come into the picture until nineteen thirteen. And all this history has taken place. Right? So right here, the League of Nations was established in nineteen twenty, which France was overseeing, right? And why was France overseeing the League of Nations in nineteen twenty? Was because the Sultan had signed this treaty right here, the bilateral treaty of Fez of nineteen twelve, that gave, uh, France the power to establish a new regime. And that new regime was called the League of Nations of nineteen twenty, which was the second rendition of the United Nations Assembly, right? So then obviously, the third United Nations would be what? The Charter of the United Nations of nineteen forty-five, right? That would be the third rendition, right? But the original was the diplomatic body at Tangier, Morocco of nineteen oh six. That was the first United Nations Assembly, you see? So even before Nour Drahli came out, look at all this history of treaties. But then the Moors would say, "Well, did Nour Drahli say that?" Well, come on, Moors. You gotta stop doing this to yourself. We have wasted ninety-four years of history. What ninety-four years of time? Because you're focusing on what Nour Drahli said and Nour Drahli was trying to enforce all these treaties. So you gotta understand what's really going on here with these timelines, Moors. We gotta stop pretending like only Nour Drahli brought us this information. We have to start understanding the timeline of history that Nour was trying to invoke this history. But the Moorish Americans keep acting like they don't know nothing about these treaties. The civic Moors only talk about the bilateral treaty of peace and friendship. Why aren't the civic Moors being taught about the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty? Why aren't the Moors being taught about the bilateral treaty of peace and friendship that was renewed in eighteen thirty-six? I mean, from eighteen thirty-six renewed in eighteen eighty-six. So the eighteen thirty-six treaty renewed in eighteen eighty-six, which happened to be the same year Nour Drahli was born. He was just an empty. Why aren't the Moorish American teachers, whether civic or temple, teaching about the Act of Algiers nineteen oh six? They don't teach about it. One hundred and twenty-three articles that talks about the Moorish government getting their sovereignty back. What type of sovereignty? External self-determination of sovereignty. I mean, we get to govern them, right? So I need Moors to explain to me, how is you taking Nour Drahli's work and saying that his works supersede treaties? It doesn't. Literature, literature does not supersede treaties. But they keep making this literature seem like it's law, and it's not law. It's private law, okay? Listen. Here's what's happening. This is Resolution Seventy-five. Okay? Resolution Seventy-five. Let's read some of it, okay, from the top.
Nineteen thirty-three Legislative Journal, House Page fifty-seven fifty-nine, Resolution Number Seventy-five. Mister Whitkin, Mister Speaker, I desire at this time to call up Resolution Number Seventy-five, Printer's Number Ten Thirty-four. The resolution is read by the clerk as follows. In the House of Representatives, April seventeenth nineteen thirty-three, many sons and daughters of that proud and handsome race which inspired the architecture of northern Africa and carried into Spain the influence of its artistic temperaments have become citizens of this nation. In the city of Philadelphia, there exists a Moorish American society made up of Moors who have found here the end of their quest for a home and of the children of those who journeyed here from the plains of Morocco.
Now, check this out. Look how they're opening up. Keep in mind, the Moorish, the Moor Science Temple Moors agreed to this terminology. You gotta see what's happening here. First of all, a government is talking to them. The Moor Science Temple ain't no government, not a state. They're a religious organization, right? So you got, in the House of Representatives, April seventeenth nineteen thirty-three. What else happened in nineteen thirty-three? All this stuff, the United States doing all this bankruptcy and undermining the gold and the silver. There's a lot of fraud, not a lot of, um, mayhem happening, right? In nineteen thirty-three, and look what the Moorish Science Temple turns around to. They say, "Many sons and daughters of that proud and handsome race which inspired the architecture of northern Africa and carried into Spain the influence of its artistic temperaments have become citizens of this nation." You see what, how the colonists wrote it? They made it seem like the Moors came from Africa. You see, you see, you gotta catch it from the beginning. Keep in mind, the Moors in the West agreed to this terminology as if we're foreigners over here. You gotta catch this first, this first sentence tells you everything, right? They're treating us like we're foreigners, right? And the Moor Science Temple agreed to this terminology. Look. It says, right here, watch this. What about this? The Moors have, the Moors have become citizens of this nation. You became citizens. Okay, then what were you before you became citizens of the United States of America is the question. What were you, Moors, before you became citizens of the United States of America? You were Moroccans. Nour Drahli said you're just citizens of Moroccans, which means you come from the Empire Morocco. You was already here. And the Moorish Americans and the Moor Science Temple would say, "Oh, we're indigenous, our origin to land." But then why'd you let the colonists write it here? You came from Africa. You didn't come from Africa. You was already here indigenous. Now, listen, listen to this right here in the city.
In the city of Philadelphia, there exists a Moorish American society made up of Moors who have found here the end of their quest for a home and of the children of those who Here the end of their quest for a home and of the children of those who journeyed here from the plains of Morocco.
Pause. So in the city of Philadelphia, there exists a Moors American Society. Did it say Moors American State?
No.
It's a society, secret society, that's now trying to be somewhat public, right? Cause J. Edgar Hoover wasn't playing that game with Moors. He didn't want the Moors to be active because J. Edgar Hoover himself was wearing a fes. Right? They knew they had colonized the Moors. So this is nineteen thirty-three, it says, in the city of Philadelphia, there exists a Moors American Society, not a Moors American State. Made up of Moors who have found here the end of their quest for a home. We wasn't looking for no home, we was already home. We got colonized and naturalized. Listen. And of the children of those who journeyed here from the plains of Morocco. How did we journey here? You see, I remember in the beginning, they said, we came here from Africa. They're trying to say that we're African slaves. No, we're not. We're indigenous. They already know this. They know we're indigenous to the land, right? So right here, it said, we journeyed here from the plains of Morocco. Well, we didn't have to journey far. Here here's our journey right here. That's it. What was the real journey? Here's the journey. The journey is, the United States uses a pen. They journey with their with their pen, they're they're writing in their journal, right? It's a journal, not a journey. And they're writing legislative acts to take you from one status to another in a matter of minutes. It's time travel with a pen. So you standing in Empire Morocco, they draft legislative act to recognize you as Americans and now all of a sudden you become American just like that. That's the journey, the journey with a pen, right? But keep in mind, the Moors Science Temple is agreeing to this. Okay, now listen, continue.
This society has done much to bring about a thorough absorption of these people. Of their principles which are necessary to make them good American citizens.
Pause. This society, did it say this state? No. This society has done much to bring about a thorough absorption. They absorbed the Moors with a pen. You see, to make them Americans, right? This society has done much to bring about a thorough absorption by these people of those principles. Which are necessary to make them good American citizens. Okay, if you were, if you were made American citizens, my question to the Moors is, what were you before you were American citizens? That's the question. That's the question. This is, this is too easy, ain't it? Okay, listen. Right here.
These Moors Americans have since being here missed the use of the titles and name. Annexations that were so familiar at home and which are used in accordance with the doctrines of the religious faith. To which they are adherents, therefore be it. Resolve that this House commends the Moors American Society of Philadelphia for the effect. And the efficient service it has rendered the nation in bringing about a speedy and thorough Americanization of. These former Moors and that in accordance with the fullest right of religious independence guaranteed every citizen. We recognize also the right of these people to use the name affixes L or Ali or V. Or any other prefix or suffix to which they have heretofore been accustomed to use. Or which they may hereafter acquire the right to use.
So what type of right was Philadelphia saying these Moors could have? First of all, they're recognizing them as Americans.
Just change your last name.
Then they turn and say, oh, y'all can use that L, Ali and V as long as you're registering it. As Americans under civil privilege jurisdictions, America. But what's the worst part? They say right here, where do your rights come from? Your fullest. The Moors Americans. Fullest right of religious independence. It's fullest right of religious independence. There are church. There are temple. There are synagogue. There are religious organization. Religious, not state. Religion ain't no different than a Baptist church. You ever heard a Baptist pastor ever saying his church is a state? No. You ever heard a Catholic priest saying his church is a state? No. You ever heard the Jehovah Witness saying that their church is a state? No. Why the heck do Moors keep running around saying their temple is a state? It's ridiculous. Let me continue. I'm gonna read this again. So Moors have been Americanized. And their rights come from what? A religious independence, right? Fullest right comes from religious independence, right? Guaranteed. Independence guaranteed every citizen. See, they're they're accepting this subjugation status, right? They're they're accepting this subjugation status, you see? They're saying, we're Americans. We've been Americanized and we 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 pledge allegiance to the American flag while simultaneously wearing a fes on their head. Claiming that they're Moors. Moor is an abbreviation for Moor Moroccan. And they're subjugating, subjugating a Moroccan flag. This is sad. And this is what's been happening since nineteen thirty, ever to present day twenty twenty-three. They have colonized themselves mentally. After a pen, they'll agree to the subjugation. This is why when you fast forward to nineteen fifty-two. Nineteen fifty-two, right? When this case come out, everybody found out that the United States of America is in Morocco. But the Moors Science Temple keeps making it look like the Moroccans are in America. But the reality is, America's in Morocco. Now, don't get me wrong, this is the Kingdom of Morocco flag, right? That's not the Empire flag. But the reality is that still a Moroccan flag, nonetheless, it should never be to the right of the United States of America's flag. Cause the United States of America is always subordinate underneath a Moroccan flag, nowhere, no matter where that flag is. The United States of America's flag is always second, always, because they were seeking asylum in the Empire of Morocco. Not the Kingdom of Morocco. This flag can come out, or should I say, it was recognized in nineteen fifty-six by the Kingdom of Morocco. Even though it came out in nineteen fifteen. So from nineteen fifteen to nineteen fifty-six, it was an Empire flag. From nineteen fifty-six until present day, it's a Kingdom of Morocco flag. We'll talk about that another day. So this is what these Moors are doing. They're selling out, whether they know it or not. Maybe these other Moors, maybe they don't know about the treaties. I don't know. But they ain't trying to find out, are they? Maybe they don't know about the charter. I don't know. But they ain't trying to find out either, are they? How is it, you gonna sit here and tell me these Moors don't know nothing about the Africans decolonized? They they never, they never crossed their mind to go look and see what the Africans did to check boxes to decolonize? They never crossed their mind? I I don't think so. I I think they know, but they just don't wanna talk about it, alright? So, so going back to Resolution seventy-five, that's what's happened to the Moors. Now, let's talk about this word. Moors American. Moors Americans, right? Isn't that what they're saying in the audience, saying that we are Moors, Moors Americans, right? Okay, listen. Listen. Here's the online etymology dictionary. When I first came in the movement, they said, oh man, you need to look up the definition of black. I was like, okay. I looked up the definition of black, cause they trying to tell me I wasn't black. And they impressed upon me by reading dictionaries. That I wasn't black. I said, well, if I'm not black, then who am I? They said, oh, you Moors American. See, right here it says Moor. Then you look in a dictionary, you can find it. Black or Moor. And then it dawned on me. I said, wait. So you said I'm not black, I'm Moors American. You had me look up Moor, Black or Moor, right? Then I looked in the dictionary, guess what's not in the dictionary? The word Moors American. Why are the Moors saying, look up the word Moors American? Listen, if I put the word Moor in here, right, it's Etymology Dictionary, right? I type the word Moor, M-O-O-R. You see how it auto-populated? You see how it auto-populates? Moor. It means the word Moor is in the Etymology Dictionary. Okay, what about Moorish, alright? The word Moorish is in the Etymology Dictionary, right? Okay, now, what if I put in the word space American? Guess what? It don't auto-populate. Why? Cause Etymology Dictionary don't recognize the word Moors American. It's not in the Etymology Dictionary. This is why Moors don't say. Oh, look up Black, then look up Black or Moor, then look up Moors American, cause we're trying to tell you you're not black, okay? If you telling me I'm not black, then why don't you point out to me that I'm Moors American in the dictionary? Okay, listen. Listen. Okay, this is Merriam-Webster's dictionary, okay? If you type in the word Moors American, here's what pops up. Noble, can you read that?
Moors American. The word you have entered isn't in the dictionary.
Okay. Moors American in Merriam-Webster's dictionary says the word you entered isn't in the dictionary. Wait a minute. So you telling me I wasn't black? Then you telling me I was a Black or Moor. We look that way. But you never took the time to show me why I'm actually a Moors American? Where's the definition for Moors American? Well, it don't exist. Well, wait a minute. Moors say, oh, you need to look up Oxford. Oxford, the world uses Oxford Dictionary. Isn't that what we're told? All all scholars use Oxford. Okay, okay, Moors. Here's Oxford Dictionary. You look up the word Moors American. In Oxford's online, and what does it say? What what does it say about Moors American?
Zero results for Moors American.
That's the result, get back. So how are Moors saying that Moors Americans, it ain't even recognizing the dictionary? Moors out here spending all kind of money on dictionaries, they never took the time to look up to see if Moors American is an actual recognized. Term or word? But we buying three hundred dollar books, dictionaries? Oh yeah, so you gotta buy those hardcover uh dictionaries, not the softback. Oh, you gotta buy hardcover. Okay, Tosh, we beg. Why did you never ask us to look up the word Moors American in the dictionary? You know why you didn't ask us to look up the word Moors American in the dictionary, Taj? Cause you knew it didn't exist. But you telling Moors to buy all these dictionaries. But yet work, the word Moors American does not exist in Oxford? Moors American does not exist in Merriam-Webster, right? Merriam-Webster? And it does not exist in the Etymology Dictionary. Can someone explain to me why we keep calling ourselves Moors Americans when it don't exist?
They're ignorant.
It don't exist in treaties. It's not recognized nowhere in international law. Nowhere does the term Moors American exist nowhere on an international level. It's not even in dictionaries. This is ridiculous. And this is what the Moors have done to us. Who did this to us? Okay, let's go back to. The temple Moors did this to us. I'm asking you, Grand Sheiks. Can you show your members of your temple the word Moors American is recognized in a dictionary? The word, the answer is no. Can you show the members of your Moors Science Temple that the word Moors Americans is in any treaty? Well, the word, the answer is no. Can you show the Moors Americans that the word Moors Americans recognized? In a constitution for the Moors Science Temple State Constitution? Well, it don't exist, cause there's no state when it comes to a temple. Temples are not states. So I'm asking a rhetorical question, cause ain't no such thing as a Moors Science Temple State Constitution. Because churches can't be states. So therefore you don't have three branch government. There's no head of state, there's no legislative branch, there's no judicial branch. You know why you don't have none of that? Because your stepmother got everything. Your stepmother's the head of state, your stepmother's the legislative branch, your stepmother got the judicial branch. And you've accepted your subjugated status. And you put the Moroccan flag to the right, the United States of America flag to the left. This is shameful. Same thing to the civic Moors. You haven't even looked up the definition of Moors American in the dictionary. It don't exist. I'll back it up again. I'll be redundant. Watch this. Backspace Moorish exists, it recognized. Backspace Moor exists, it recognized. It don't recognize Moors American. This is ridiculous. Listen. What is it that happened in eighteen eighty? The Moors are saying, well, especially Moors Science Temple, they say, we don't recognize the thirteen, fourteenth and fifteenth amendment of the United States of uh. America. Okay, uh Moors Science Temple, Grand Sheiks. Do you recognize treaties? Because if you do, then you will find out about the right of protections in Morocco. In eighteen eighty confirmed the naturalized status of all Moors. But the Grand Sheiks, y'all gotta go back and read this treaty out loud. It's about you. And all your members of your church, okay? Here's the same obligation. Look, I'm going to Article fifteen, Grand Sheiks. I'm talking to the Grand Sheiks. Talking to the Grand Sheiks. Okay, here we go, Article fifteen, Grand Sheiks. This is what you've agreed to do. Uh Noble, can you read um Article fifteen, paragraph two?
Article fifteen, paragraph two, foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco. According to the rules established by the laws of each country. Shall be continued to them as regards all its effects without any restriction.
So the Moors Science Temple. And unfortunately, I will say also the civic Moors who are unaware of the due process of international law. They all fall under paragraph two of Article fifteen. It says, foreign colonization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco. All civic Moors and all temple Moors are subjects of Morocco, right? So from the beginning, foreign naturalization, so the foreigners naturalized us. The Americans. Naturalized the Moroccans in Morocco, right? So foreign naturalization. Heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco. According to the rules established by the laws of the United States of America and the United States, right? Shall be continued to them, continued to the United States and the United States of America as regards all the facts without any restriction. So this is called a subjugation colonialism, right? Colonization, part two of Article fifteen. And the Moors Science Temple sheiks and shekesses are all recognizing paragraph two. They don't realize it, but they're saying, we're okay with being subjects of Morocco. We're okay with being subjugated. We're okay with coming under the civil and criminal laws of the United States. And guess what? I got no problem with that. What's the problem I got? Here here's the problem I have, right here. Let me show you the problem I have. Here's the problem I have. You can't be wearing fes. You're disrespecting and soiling everything that we've been trying to do as Moors to decolonize. You can't be running around with a fes, and the fes represents so much honor. It represents Moors. Indigenous people, the consequent of Moroccans. And you turn around and put on a fes while still being on a chain gang. Just because you got on a fes don't make you a competent Moor. Just cause you got on a fes don't mean that now you know all about law. You know what a fes represents? It represents the fes when you are competent Moor that has followed the instructions of the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty. Here's what's gonna make you competent when you put on a fes, and until then, Moors should take them fes off. Article fifteen, paragraph one. Listen up, Grand Sheiks. Tell this to all your members of your church. Paragraph one.
Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco. Shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him. To obtain such naturalization. Choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco. Unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco.
So right now, the Moors Science Temple and their sheiks and members. Don't understand that these were specific instructions that came out in eighteen eighty. Six years before Noble Drew Ali was born. Six years before he was even born, much less by the time Noble came out in nineteen thirteen. Six years before he was even born, much less by the time Noah came out in nineteen thirteen, right? So you talking about thirty, what, thirty-three years by the time Noah was born, right? Thirty-three years, right? So check this out. Paragraph one, Grand Sheiks. Says, "Any subject of Morocco," that's you, "your subject of Morocco, who has been naturalized in the United States of America." All the Moor Science Temple Moors and your members have been naturalized in the United States of America. And who shall return to Morocco shall after having remained for a length of time equal to which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization of the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth amendment as was the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy. The Sultan turned around and confirmed the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth amendment that you say you don't recognize. But guess what? The Sultan recognized it in eighteen eighty. But you need to teach this to your members, Grand Sheiks. Listen. What's the obligation of Grand Sheiks and your members? You're supposed to do what? Choose between the entire submission to the laws of the Empire. It say, "Choose no temple." It says, "Choose the Empire." The Empire has had a government at that time. The Sultan was overseeing the government. Listen. And the obligation to quit Morocco. So y'all gotta quit Morocco. Unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. Governor Morocco, who you gotta get your permission from in order to remain as a subjugated Moor. So it was all the Moors' obligation to choose between. Okay, listen, you gotta choose between the entire submission to the laws of the Empire. But see, you don't wanna choose. You're trying to claim both. Wrong answer. You gotta choose one. Moorish Americans from the temple? Choose this one. I'm okay with you accepting the United States of America's flag, but you need to take that thing on fess off and you need to stop waving Moroccan flags. You ain't claiming to be Moroccan no more. If you wanna be Moroccan, you gotta choose the entire submission of the laws of the Empire and come back to a Moroccan state government and stop thinking it as if your temple is a state. And you gotta choose between this flag and a Moroccan flag. That's the problem. That's the problem. You don't wanna choose. You wanna straggle the fess. At least the civic Moors, at the very least, they're trying to find a way to decolonize, but unfortunately, the Moor Science civic teachers didn't teach their students how to actually decolonize in a competent way through Declaration of Independence and three branches of government of a constitution of the ratified and deposited promulgated. That's the problem. It's the leaders. It's the leadership, right? So I, I need the Moors to understand this of the Moor Science Temple. I'm talking to y'all with respect, right? Because we're all brothers and sisters. We, we gotta stick together. We, we gotta all come together. We gotta huddle up. The civic Moors and, and the temple Moors, we gotta all come together. 'Cause we're all brothers and sisters. We're all Aboriginal and indigenous in this land. But we gotta come together. We, we have to follow the instructions of these treaties. Noah Drali had the same obligation to follow the instructions of these treaties. These came out in eighteen eighty before Noah was even born. Noah knew that we were not Americans. He knew that we were naturalized in the jurisdiction of America. That's what the first paragraph's talking about. You've been naturalized. But the first paragraph gave you specific instructions to choose between entire submission to the laws of the Empire. What about the Empire? It's about what? The government of Morocco. That's what it's about. Right? Now, listen. Here's what y'all gotta understand. I'm talking to the sheiks right now. All the Grand Sheiks, shekisses, and all your members are still subjects of Morocco. All of y'all are subjects of Morocco. All y'all are Moorish subjects, right? Moorish subjects. That's what the treaty says, right? Says, "Any subject of Morocco," that's you, right? Listen, here's another treaty in which I don't read to your, your members. This is a treaty of the Act of Outages of nineteen oh six, and guess what it says under Article One oh two? Watch this. The, the Grand Sheiks, y'all need to read this, 'cause this is what's about to happen, okay? I'm gonna go to Control App. Type in One oh two. One oh two. One oh two. Noah, can you read Article One oh two, please?
Article One oh two, "Every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consular jurisdiction and on Moorish subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction."
One more time.
Article One oh two, "Every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consular jurisdiction and on Moorish subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction."
What does this mean, uh, Moor Science Temple and your Grand Sheiks? What does this mean, civic Moors? It means as long as y'all remain as Moorish subjects who've been naturalized in the United States, it means that the Moroccan states, the Moroccan states, the Moroccan states, these seven states, that's drawing, will have civil and criminal jurisdiction over you. All because you wanna continue being subjugated people. Right? Now, when I say that, I mean your teachers have continued to indoctrinate you not to understand how to get on the yellow brick road. So I'm talking to the Grand Sheiks who are teaching your members. I'm talking to the civic Moor teachers who keep teaching their students all this miseducation. You're leading your people into a status of genocide. You're leading your people into a status of subjugation. And this is why they keep dealing with adjudication in the jurisdiction of the United States of America. But I need you to understand something, that the United States of America also knows that the Moroccan governments have jurisdiction over all foreigners and jurisdiction over all Moorish subjects. And that's you. So you need to understand something. The civic Moors and the temple Moors should adhere to the treaties. And you need to return back to a Moroccan state government and pledge allegiance to the entire submission to the laws of the Empire. This list of Moroccan states will grow. I guarantee you. I don't promise you. I guarantee you. Right now, we got seven Moroccan states overseeing these colonized territories. We've become now the external self-determination state, right? We're, we're seeking full decolonization just like the African states. We're taking steps towards that. We're getting into friendly relations with the United States. Right? The United States knows what's up already, right? So they already know, they gotta come to the table and deal with decolonization, right? One step at a time, right? So I end by saying this. The Moors, all the Moors, whether temple Moors or civic Moors, the game is up. We will get back into government. All the Moors will be governed. And your stepmother is gonna continue to adjudicate you until you come back to Morocco and adhere to Moroccan laws. So it's still your choice. But even if you stay over here with your stepmother, that's your stepmother's flag. Always remember this. You can run, but you can't hide because the Consular Court still has jurisdiction over you. I am back, Islam.